Item number C, report number 300, which is a proposal for the construction of the Cluntarf to city centre cycle route. Can I have a proposal for that? Oh, you're not proposing it. Can I have a proposal for that, councillor Murray and councillor Flanagan?
So can we speak on that, please?
People want to indicate.
Councillor O'Malley.
Yeah, I asked for drawings for this earlier on. Now, I know they'll get sent out as in a lower format or a smaller format, but I would like it deferred for a month so the two areas could get together and discuss it. There's an awful lot in it and it's a fairly risky thing to do at the moment. And as was pointed out before, we do need proper details for the cycle route before we go any further. So defer this, defer it for a month and the two local areas that are involved in the Dublin area for the cycle track meet before then. Gormhaigthadh.
I've quite a number of speakers here now. Councillor O'Farrell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
People can be brief, please.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. No, I've been raising concerns, I suppose, about part eights for a long time. I just feel the public consultation is just not good enough for a lot of the part eights we're going to make and we're coming with problems. Like, I mentioned the last time that the maps that we had in front of us for another part eight weren't correct and I was told that it didn't matter that what the words, the words are right, it's okay to pass it. This proposal was put to the local area, the North Central Area Committee in our July meeting. So it was our last meeting, July, this proposal, and there was trees, there was a load of trees that were going to be removed. And while I didn't approve that at the area committee, it was approved and it went through. So they had a proposal, but in the meanwhile they changed it. There was a campaign started and they changed the proposals. So they've come up with a new proposal and we only got the new proposal last week. Last week by email, that's when we got this proposal to take away a lane of traffic, leave the trees there, come up with another scheme and we're asked tonight to come and approve it. It's just ridiculous and I would support councillor O'Malley's thing for, I would even say two months might be enough, but it needs to be deferred. It can't be, we can't be putting part eights through like this without enough time for consideration. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Bork.
Yeah, well, Lord Mayor, just to echo the sentiments of councillor O'Farrell, I think the manager trying to ram it through here tonight is totally unacceptable. The Central Area Committee rejected the plan to remove trees and cycle lane and it went down total rejection. Pleased to say that the manager now, after a lot of political pressure, has withdrawn from removing the trees after a petition of 9,000 by local residents were shown and given to the manager. But I think for the manager to come in tonight and expect us to agree, that is totally unacceptable. So I'm proposing that we reject the manager's plan and go back to the drawing board. And I'm also concerned about the cycle lane going in towards Amiens Street and Talbot Street. Totally unacceptable, Lord Mayor, when you compare it with others in the city.
Councillor Deere-Raheny.
Gormhaigthadh, Lord Mayor. This is a part eight for a cycleway of 2.7 kilometres from Cluntarf in as far as Talbot Street. And I'm afraid, Lord Mayor, I will be not able to support the part eight as it's being proposed by the manager because it is a fundamentally different proposal to that which went out to public consultation. What the manager is proposing is, instead of removing 46 roadside trees, he is now proposing to remove one-third of a kilometre of road space for general traffic. And in my view, that is a fundamental change in what went out to public consultation and therefore I cannot support the part eight as it's currently proposed. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Brabham.
Gormhaigthadh, Lord Mayor. Yeah, I agree fully with my colleague councillor Raheny in relation to this. I just think this is another example of the council, you know, acting the bully boy against the private motorist. You know, here we are again, the people who pay the most to use the roads are getting the least service and the road space is proposed to be reduced. But that aside, I think the point it's made, that the actual proposal is so fundamentally changed, it should go back to the drawing board and it should go back out to public consultation. Gormhaigthadh.
Councillor Lyons.
Yeah, Lord Mayor, just to support councillor O'Malley and his proposal to delay this for at least a month, perhaps two, because it has significantly changed to the presentation we were presented with just before we broke up for the summer. So I do think we need time and it's welcome that it's changed and I think that's as a result of People Power, a local campaign of people to save those trees in Fairview. But there are also other issues in terms of the quality, the bus rapid transit system as being one of the main reasons, I think, why we can't have a continuous two-way segregated cycle track all the way into Amiens Street. And I just think that's another factor that I think we need to explore further. I think there could be some element there that, you know, we might be able to come up with a solution that resolves that particular issue. And I'm just not fully clear because it is significantly, there's additional information, which I say is welcome and it's a very comprehensive report, but there is additional information as regards to how the separated, the two single cycleways are then, how the cyclist then merges back into the two-way segregated cycleway. So I do think there is a lot of information that we need to tease out at the area committee and then we can come back towards a month's time. Thank you.
And Carlyle O'Leary, she's in.
Níireann Ladhail. Yeah, just to concur with most of what's been said, I would prefer for it to be postponed, but I think there's also a need for a bit of clarity around, as John says, kind of teasing these things out because the vast majority of these issues were raised in a large amount of detail at our area committee meeting. And the, first of all, the fact that it's on the agenda even though the area committee asked for it to be deferred, and then also the fact that it doesn't seem to be clear how the feedback from the area committee, what role that has and how it can be integrated. Some parts of it have been integrated in terms of the trees, other parts of it in terms of the quality of the route haven't been. So I think it would be good, as well as agreeing to defer it, if the manager could give some indication on how exactly the area committees can alter the route as necessary.
Gormhaigthadh.
Corlann Nish-O'Malley. Gormhaigthadh, Lord Mayor. This is a project, Lord Mayor, that I've taken a bit of interest in over the years because there's no doubt Fairview needs a very good connection to the city centre, but it's much bigger than Fairview and, you know, it's much bigger than Cluntarf as well. This is for Raheny, it's for Clastor, it's for Artean, it's for Cullagh, it's for many parts of your own area, it's for Gilbaragh, it's for Ballymun. An awful lot of people come down main routes from those villages or there and they go into town or come back on bikes. It is not an easy place to cycle. I've done it myself. I'm not a manic cyclist, but I have started cycling as a commuter and it definitely needs improvement. There's a 12 million scheme on the table here. There was an issue with the trees. We have fixed space, anybody who's been out in Fairview too, everybody has, we have a fixed amount of space between the trees and the retail side of Fairview. Only somewhat space, Lord Mayor, and what the city council is proposing. And they've gone through a part eight and we have a written report here that we, you know, if we're going to keep the trees, something else has to give. It's either the parking or a lane of traffic. I'm not delighted to see a lane of traffic going, but on balance, this part of the city needs a connection to the city centre because the area should be cyclable to the city centre and it stands, it's not safe. There's an awful lot of talk about the trees and people chaining themselves to various trees, et cetera. Thankfully, that's all dissipated here now tonight, not hearing it anymore. I think we have one shot at this. I have no difficulty with a one-month extension or deferring it for a month, to give people a chance to understand what's in the proposal. But this is a part eight process, it's a formal planning process and it will come to the same decision that we have a decision to make, whether it's this month or next month. So I'd just ask councillors around the city and around the chamber to give it close consideration because there's a big project at stake here, funded by the NTA, 12 million for a great facility, improvements to Fairview Park, other improvements. I accept their issues around this conflict and we need to resolve all those issues over time, but it's a very, very worthwhile project to consider. So before we throw it out the window, let's give it good consideration. Thank you.
Councillor McAdam.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I'd just make three comments, Lord Mayor. Firstly, as Chair of the Central Area Committee, I'm happy to second the proposal by councillor Murray that we defer for a month. This has been floating around now for two years at least, so I know there's a statutory timeline involved, but it's been, that statutory timeline has been well and truly beaten around, so I don't see why there's no difficulty with a further month extension. There's two issues in particular that I have a concern about. One is the interaction between cyclists and particularly in the bus stops along the North Strand Road. And I think it was evident to us at the Central Area in July that when the city council came up with the design, they then went off and met the stakeholders. Now, if you're going to do any proposal or any project like this, I would have thought we'd go off and meet, engage with the stakeholders and then get their feedback to come up with a proposal. And I think what's there at the moment, even with the reviews that I've seen now being circulated in recent days, I'm still not satisfied. And I think that whilst, as councillor Murray has indicated, it's not safe at present, I'm not convinced that the proposal is going to make it any safer either. And that ties in, I suppose, with the second argument or concern I have regarding the single segregated cycleways. I think the best way to counteract that would be if there was one two-way cycle path. So on that basis, Chair, I would like to see further teasing out of the issues, both at a combined meeting maybe of the Central Area and the North Central Area, because as councillor O'Malley has rightly pointed out, this doesn't just affect us and my constituents in the North Strand and East Wall and Ballybock, but also right across the North Central and the North West areas as well. And I think we should take the extra four-week period to tease these things out before reaching a final decision. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ring.
Gormhaigthadh, Lord Mayor. I was involved in this campaign and I asked the manager last week for some information in relation to the materiality or otherwise of the amendments. And the reply I got was, the revisions have been made to take account of the statutory observations received as well as feedback received from members of the Central and North Central Area Committee. That simply put is absolutely wrong. The reason the revisions have been made is because of people power in East Wall, North Strand, Marino, Fairview, Cluntarf, Ballybock. When 15,000 people have signed a petition, 13,000 online and 2,000 in every local shop, every local bookie, every local pub in the area, people went in, they drove to sign a petition to say, you will not remove our historic trees. We were listened to and that there is a revision, but the revision was because of people power. The revision is now, to me, looks like a knee-jerk reaction. I don't think a month is enough because I think we have to really go back to the drawing board on this. The plan at the moment is ill-conceived, it's fundamentally flawed. If you look at A to S in terms of the submissions received in the report, not one of the ideas put forward by members of the public has been accepted. And these major changes, in particular the 350-metre removal of a main artery coming from three other main arteries, Hoath Road, Cluntarf Road and Malahide Road, is absolutely bizarre. And just to put a cap on it, my good friends in the cyclist lobby actually object to this. They are against it. The cyclists themselves are against it, the local businesses are against it, the local public reps are against it, the local public most importantly are against it, the people of Dublin are against it and the 15,000 people who signed a petition within a couple of weeks are against it. So I say, back to the drawing board, I would reject this out of hand and let's get a proper plan for Fairview. Gormhaigthadh.
Carlyle O'Mahon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to be brief. If the proposal on the table is to delay this by a month to allow for further consultation, I am happy and I would support that. But I just want to make a general point in relation to cycle infrastructure and the upgrading of cycle infrastructure. We have more roads in our deaths this year of cyclists than we have had of any other year. And if the tone of this meeting is to be replicated, we will prioritise the private car over the safety of cyclists all the time. If we are really going to transform the city, if we are really going to transform transport in the city and make it safer for cycling, we have to be allowed to realise that there is going to be situations where the private car and the private motorist cannot be accommodated all the time. People take up less space on a bike, they move quicker in a bike. If you're sick of being stuck in traffic, get on a bike. And I just think that's really important for the people around this room to remember if we're going to have a city going into the future that's environmentally friendly and that people can get around safely, quickly, with taking up as little space as possible. Thank you.
Councillor Montague.
Thanks very much. Yeah, I think it's really important that we get a good cycling route on this part of the city. It's actually the busiest cycling route in the entire city or it's certainly one of them, it has been in the top two for the last 10 years. And it's really important that we have really safe facilities along there. I think the proposal to save the trees and remove a lane of traffic is a very good proposal. There are more lanes of traffic on this part of Fairview than there are on the M7 or any of the motorways in the city, so it's not needed and in fact it's destroying Fairview. All of that traffic makes it really difficult to cross the road, people can't access the park and it makes for a very unpleasant environment. It would be much better to have less lanes of traffic and I think so that we're moving in the right direction. I'd like to ask the manager what the implications are of waiting a month. It seems to be the mood of the meeting, that if we wait a month, we might be able to get more consensus on this. But has that got any implications for any funding for this plan? Could I also ask about some of the details on some of the pedestrian crossings in particular? I believe there's a plan to remove a pedestrian crossing at Marino College and can we get more information on that? So, and also the pros and cons of the two-way. There's a lot of people arguing that there should be a two-way cycle route on one side of the road and then the management are saying that, no, that we should have a cycle route on either side of the road. So what are the, why are we not going on the two lanes of cycle on one side of the road? But overall, I think this is a move in the right direction. If it came to a vote tonight, I'd support it, but if people wanted to defer it, that's fine as long as we get a high-quality cycle lane in this area. It's very badly needed.
Carlyle O'Rourke, McGinnity.
Yeah, thank you. It's obviously this area is away from the south side of the city, notwithstanding that, you certainly do get comments to the effect that it is a well-used cycle route which needs improvement. And reading the correspondence today from an outside London consultant on the cycleway, it's quite damning really in terms of what we're trying to do, maybe the CEO shaking his head, but it'd be interesting to hear what he has to say. There is a compromise in everything, you know, I don't know how feasible it is in the very long run to maintain the number of trees we're talking about and take out the chunk of roadway and do everything else we want to do. This is an important piece of infrastructure if we think ahead 100 years, you know, this is a 100-year decision. So I do think we need to take more time on it. I personally am unsatisfied reading the correspondence that everything has been considered by the management. I still think there are modifications that could be made to improve the proposal. Thank you.
Michael O'Brien.
Yeah, I'm just really provoked to come in on the discussion on the basis of councillor O'Mahon's intervention because I don't know whether there's some misunderstanding here. Certainly I can't get into the heads of every one of the other councils who are in favour of a postponement, which I am as well, but certainly some of the strongest representations that have been made to us have been from those advocating complete segregation of the cycle lane from the roadway, which if anything would enhance cyclist safety. So it doesn't really stand up that those of us that are in favour of a delay are at this regard and quite the opposite is the case. And maybe there are some other councils that are part of the car lobby, but, you know, certainly not myself or most of the council would be in favour of a postponement of this pending, taken on board. Some of the very expert submissions have been sent to all councillors from campaigners and the likes.
Carlyle Flynn.
Gormhaigthadh, Lord Mayor. Just simply about, you know, proper transport, proper management of the road structure. And, you know, if you don't have the confidence of the councillors and you don't have the confidence of the public and you don't have the confidence of cyclists and motorists, well then you can forget about it. But there is a continuity here because Dublin City Council seems to be kind of like expert at this kind of carry-on. We marched seven times up and down the Quays in relation to finding a proper cycling route along the Quays and each time it was rejected because of flaws within the plan itself. And then at one stage of the game, we were actually convinced that this particular plan would work and then we realised that the building of the site that was in front of us was actually just recently sold by Dublin City Council, so that got scrapped. This is about everybody's safety and it's about respect on those kind of roads. So there's no point in actually building infrastructure that is not going to work. And in this instance, this is where the city council basically have railroaded in, you know, their view. Let this be postponed, let it go back out to public consultation and let's get this particular right. This is not just about a local issue, this is about national transport, it's about transport within the city. And let's face facts, the cars in the city has been reduced, 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 there's more and more people actually cycling, but it's about behaviour, it's about behaviour, it's about behaviour and it's about massive individuals driving massive trucks. It's about a disregard for cyclists in general, which is out there, and also for pedestrians. So we want the better city and I believe that this is no way to get a better city by simply like shoehorning this particular issue in. I also believe that the issue was won because myself and councillor Bork threatened to actually chain ourselves to the trees. I think that's what actually swung the city council, decided we was chaining ourselves to the trees. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Gormhaigthadh. On client's or derinach airsean? And Carlyle O'Leary, Sníireann.
Apologies to come in again, thank you. Just, I just think it is worth clarifying, as Michael said, like certainly the only reason that I'm interested in deferring this is that I think the quality of the cycle route has been downgraded to such an extent that we'll end up with the worst of both worlds, which is, you know, the destruction of trees, but not a cycle route that's high enough quality to encourage non-cyclists to use it. And I think that's what we have over the city and it's that more than anything else that leads to people not cycling in Dublin. It's not a lack of cycle routes, it's total low quality cycle routes.
Gormhaigthadh, Carlyle. But I actually shouldn't have let you in because you were already in. I forgot that, we had so many speakers, I forgot I'd let you in. And now councillor O'Malley is using the opportunity to come in again.
To that point though, Lord Mayor.
Very briefly.
Yeah, very briefly. For every, I've engaged with the cycling community. For every cyclist I meet that I've engaged with that is in favour of a two-way segregated, I have another commuter cyclist who wants a solution on the village side of Fairview because they want to get out quickly, at speed, on a safe lane and get up either the Hoath Road or the Malahide Road. So this idea that a kind of a two-way segreg, that is the view of some in the cycling community, but for everyone I meet, there's another one who says, the best way out is straight down Fairview because it gets me where I want safely. And just the other thing, in terms of councillor O'Leary.
Sorry, councillor, I've given both you and councillor.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Gormhaigthadh. The managers want to come in.
I'd just say a couple of words before my colleague Brendan O'Brien addresses some of the technical issues that have been raised this evening. I suppose the first thing is to say that this particular proposal has been floating around, if that's the word, for the last two years since about 2015 and there's been a tremendous amount of consultation and discussion and engagement has taken place between council officials and all of the relevant interested groups. We are here this evening because we have listened to the elected members and also to those who have made representations to the council. This isn't an attempt to shoehorn or to bully or whatever, it is the result of careful consideration of representations that have been made at area committee and also in writing. We've been accused on many occasions of not listening and here we have an occasion that we have listened and we have worked on the proposal in order to deal with the loss of the trees, the loss of the car parking. And my colleague will explain the issues in relation to a two-way and two-way cycle route and also the, what we feel, the loss of the delay and why that isn't material in relation to the overall development and indeed the overall traffic position in this part of the city. So I'd just allow my colleague now, sorry, before I go on, I would urge that we actually make a decision this evening in relation to this, a positive decision in relation to this proposal. If you head down the route of postponement, there is a clock ticking and the clock says that this will last for six weeks, I think, Brendan, six weeks. And if there isn't a decision in six weeks, then it falls. Brendan.
Okay, thanks. There was one or two specific technical items that I'll just very briefly address. There was the, we're not proposing to remove a pedestrian crossing at Marino College. What we said in the report was that in light of the fact that we are proposing to remove a lane of traffic at that point, we would propose that while we put in all the infrastructure, that we will wait a period of time to assess the impact of traffic and, you know, rather than putting it in straight away, we would propose to put the pedestrian crossing in at the footbridge, which would remove the situation that is there at the moment where it's not feasible for anybody who's mobility impaired to actually cross the road at that particular point. So to be clear, all the infrastructure, the ducting, everything else will go in. We're proposing a delay until we see the actual impact of traffic as the scheme progresses. The two-way versus one-way has been a real issue that's been brought up. We would point out a number of items with it. A two-way segregated cycle track is a very good facility, however, in the particular location that's been proposed, namely between Ansley Bridge and Newcomber Bridge, the real problem we have is not with a two-way segregated cycle track, it's with the number of side roads that are on that particular route and the impact that that would have for safety. So for safety for a lot of the side roads, we would have to signalise the side roads. So the example we'd have is that between Newcomber Bridge and Ansley Bridge, we currently have four sets of traffic signals. That is likely to go up to 10. And I wouldn't, and I've said this before at the North Central Area Committee, I wouldn't stand over that, putting that in, because that would be the only way to safely do it. And so what we're looking at here is, there is a philosophical argument, if you like, between two-way and one-way. What we're saying is that we've assessed the two-way and simply we cannot put it in and it's not safe to do it at this location. We do propose two-way segregated cycle tracks in other parts of the city where we don't have the same particular issues. And that is why we have looked very carefully at this, we've looked at how to do it, we've looked at what the implications of it are and we simply are saying it is not feasible in that section to do it. And I would echo what councillor Murray said, there is many cyclists who are opposed to two-way segregated at this particular location as are for them. So it is not a question that we have ignored what's come into us, we have looked at it in great detail. We are convinced that the solution in this and that particular location is a segregated cycle track either side of the road. It provides the best option and the safest option at this location.
Okay, Deirdre.
We have a motion to defer from the chairs of the North Central Area and the Central Area. If we take that first, is that?
Sorry, I'm going to ask the same question to clarify, is that for a month? Okay.
The October council meeting, Lord Mayor.
Is that agreed?